All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustee Meeting for June 8th, 2020. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:32. Let's have roll call, please.
Dan Gaffney.
Here.
Dan Green.
Here.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Here.
Ann Rose.
Here.
Chris Shaw.
Here.
And Julie Meredith.
Excellent. We need approval of remote participation of board members.
I move that we approve remote participation for board members.
I second.
Thank you, Nancy. It's been moved and seconded to approve the remote participation of Jan Gaffney, Daniel Green, Allison McFadden-Keesling, Nancy Moon, Marilyn Palmeroy, Ann Rose, and Kristi Shaw. Let's have a roll call, please.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
She's muted.
You're muted, Allison.
Thank you. I know. I couldn't unmute. I had to get permission. Yes.
And I was looking at my paper, not at the screen. I apologize. Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Here.
And Chris Shaw.
Yes.
And that is why Bill runs the meeting and I just take notes along with him.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. We need to add one item. Our lawyer has sent an emergency paid sick leave policy for us to review and approve. I'll accept the motion for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
I second.
I'm sorry, who did that?
Nancy.
I did.
Doesn't matter.
Which one are you going to pick, Erica?
We'll take Nancy. I saw hers.
Okay.
Very good.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
We have to do roll call, Marilyn. Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Now it's time for call to the public. Hi, Laura.
Hello. Am I supposed to talk now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we have been meeting, the board, Friends of the Library Board has also been meeting virtually. We did not send out our spring newsletter, but we're holding it in abeyance for fall with the insert. And our main topic of discussion has been having a book sale where we would sell pre-filled books, bags of books with a genre, like a bag of mystery books, a bag of fiction. And we would do curbside delivery. People would order them, pay for them, and then we would deliver them at the curb. We don't have that all worked out, but that's what we're talking about.
That's a good idea.
Yes. Any questions or comments for Laura?
When do you think you might do that, Laura?
We don't know yet. We're meeting again this week to try to finalize things and get it in motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll have to coordinate that with Julie and her staff, too.
Absolutely. We wouldn't do anything without Julie.
Yes.
Also, I've had questions about when people can donate. I think they've been cleaning out their stash over the last two months.
Well, we've had people, I think, dropping off books even though we weren't prepared to have them, but I think it should open up, right, Julie?
We need to, at the moment, with curbs, with the plan we have in place, we're not letting the volunteers back in the building quite yet. Not until we have kind of settled into the procedures, because we have special, when you come into the building, we have to do a temperature check and a screening, symptom screening and things like that. And so until we get all that sort of settled in and we get into that routine, we haven't brought in volunteers. But as soon as we get that done, then we'll let the volunteers come in and join us and they can get to work on, there's piles in the back for them.
Any other questions? Thanks, Laura, for joining us.
Finally, yes.
Are there any other call to the public issues or questions? If not, we'll close the call to the public at 6:38. And I'll accept a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. We have five items. Anybody want to talk about any of those individually? If not, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yes.
And Chris Shaw.
Motion is passed. Did we lose Chris?
No.
No, she said yes.
Oh, okay.
It was a little bit, it was a little bit quiet, but she was there.
Okay, how, any comments on library statistics?
So actually, I do have a nice little stat report, and I believe Bill has me set up so that I can show it to you. If I can share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Uh huh.
We got it.
Hold it up there. There we go. Okay, so this is our statistical report for May of 2020. Children's and teen programs, we had 15 virtual programs with 338 participants, two passive programs with 60 participants. Adult programs, there were 10 programs with 52 participants. There was a summer reading program video. It had 156 views. Total downloaded e items, 6,747. That's down slightly. It was 6,859 in April. We've done 26 chat sessions, 21 marked information interactions, phone calls inbound, there were 232. YouTube views, there were 561. That's up from the previous 310. And the children's, there were 140 YouTube views, but we didn't have, we weren't counting those last month, and so we don't have that to compare. We also have some additional notes from Tracy, our head of Children's and Teen Services. The Youth and Teen Department presented 15 live programs in the month of June, which were attended by 338 people. Most of these were storytimes, and the number of people who attended these storytimes is very comparable, and in some cases, more than actually our in-person storytimes. May is also the month when we typically present summer reading to the students in the schools. We usually have a huge number of participants in our statistics, because we count each student we see, just nearly every student from early fives through seventh grade. This year, with only posting our presentation on our blog, YouTube channel, and word of mouth from our online storytimes, we still have garnered 156 views as of today for those presentations. The Youth Department also conducted two programs that we would have called passive programs previously from our blog and Instagram. One was an iSpy contests that they held. They drew 10 to 20 kids each week. And our Letters from Librarians program has also drawn about eight responses and brought Ms. Tracy much joy when one of our young participants actually wrote back, so.
Very good.
That's very nice.
Now for the... Pardon?
Lots of activity going on there.
Yes, considering that we're virtual, yes.
Yeah.
Are we ready for the library director's report?
We sure are. I'll pull that screen so I can do another screen share. I'm getting pretty savvy with this stuff.
We're impressed.
All right, there's my screen share.
Yes.
So this looks very familiar to last month, because a lot of what I've been doing is pretty much the same. Managing administrative maintenance of library, the majority of which is being done remotely, troubleshooting building issues as needed, monitoring executive orders. We're up to 115 now, I think. I've lost count. Meeting remotely each week, the department heads, the PR staff, the administrative staff. With all staff, I meet every, we've been meeting every other week. I've also been attending weekly remote meetings from the Michigan Library Directors, helped by the state librarian. I do check in on the virtual programs and services and provide staff with feedback on that. Attending remote meetings and webinars, reviewing best practices, you know, CDC Library of Michigan, et cetera. I have a list of what I've done in the last month. I went to a reopening policies for your library done by Ann Surrink. She's our library law specialist. Human resources in the time of COVID-19, which was put on by MLA. The Detroit Suburban Library Roundtable Directors Meeting. Worker, working together on planning policy and legal issues for reopening a public library, the board, the attorney, and the librarian. That's from United for Libraries, so that's a national presentation. I did go to the Clarkston Community Awards Committee meeting, a panel discussion of reopening plans from MLA and the library community moving forward and the new normal, and that was an ALA thing as well. The Clarkston Community Awards Committee is working right now on coming up with a plan for trying to do that breakfast anyway. It wouldn't be a breakfast, but we would do some sort of an award ceremony if possible. One of the things that came up was the possibility of doing it almost like a drive-in movie, where people would attend by driving in and parking in parking spaces, and then the awardees would come up one at a time outside and receive their award in front of everyone, and we have a speaker system. There were two locations that were possible. One of them was the park, and one of them was the library, so I wanted to let the board know that there was an inquiry about whether we would be able to do that. We thought, in our case, our parking spaces all go east-west, and we have a nice, open piece of land to the west. So if it were a setup so that everybody was parking in one direction, so that they were all pointing toward that one area, we thought we could make that work. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out there for you to ponder. We're not quite to the point where we make a decision yet, but we were one of the places that they were hoping might be willing to allow that. So additional things I've been working on, developing a detailed reopening policy with the library's attorney, reviewing the emergency sick leave policy to address COVID-19 based on federal laws, coordinating the remote meeting with the Friends Board, developing daily work-from-home training emails to prepare the library's staff, and preparing the building for the return-to-work plan, so purchasing supplies, developing daily screening process for staff, posting signage required by the executive order, laying out staff workspaces to allow for proper social distancing, developing program plans for staffing schedules, that sort of thing. And I can show you one other thing that we have done, and that is to develop this plan. See if I can share this screen properly. This one. Basically, what we did was we took the library building and we divided it up. Now, normally, there's a, this section right here is our staff area, and the rest of the building is public. A lot of our cubicles are shared cubicles. And so what we've done is tried to make it so that each person is in one space, and we've spread some people out into the public area of the building, so that we have two youth librarians sharing these activities room, which is a nice big space that can be socially distanced properly. The adult librarians are sharing the space up here. We have one adult librarian at the information desk. We have Deb, who works on Melcat. We have her out in the adult services area. Heather, we're putting kind of in the teen area. Louise in the teen lounge. We're turning the conference room into a program studio for doing virtual storytimes and that kind of thing. We have a green screen. We have a smart board, that kind of thing. So that would be where we would film those programs to broadcast them. Curbside is semi-set up in the lobby and semi-set up in this, in this section right in front of...
Checkout.
Right in front of the circulation desk. And then this, this meeting, the large meeting room, we've left open for project workspace because it would allow us to social distance properly. One of the things that we think will happen, you'll see in this reopening plan provided by the attorney, is the first stage in letting the public back in the building would be to let them into just a portion of the building. So the way we would tackle that would be to put the gate down, which allows the public access to the lobby, the hallway, the public restrooms, and this big meeting room. And we could set up, the first thing that I think that people are going to want is the ability to use computers, and we could set up computers appropriately socially distanced. And we have ordered special disposable keyboard covers and mouse sleeves, so people could make appointments, come in to use the computer. Once they're finished with that, we would dispose of those sleeves, disinfect the entire area so that the next person could come in, and we could have a staff member in there that would still be able to help the patrons. That would help us, give us that transitional stage. So much of our building is public space, and so much of it is touchable space, and our building is such a gathering place, it's going to be difficult until we make some changes to be able to allow people to wander freely through the building and make sure that we can clean it effectively enough so that everybody feels safe. So that would be that first stage, but that's why we haven't put any staff in that room. Right now, we would use it as a project space, but we're kind of holding it, knowing that that's kind of what comes next. Any questions about that?
Looks like you all been working really hard. And I know I say this every month, but I'm continually impressed and proud.
I know the staff is pleased. I've been passing that on to them.
Shows a lot of thought. All right, any questions?
Creative thought, too, you know, it's, because it's so, everything is so different. And yeah, good for you guys. I'm really, I'm thrilled.
It's been a challenge, and everybody's been, I have a lot of troopers, lots and lots of troopers. I've been making it work, so.
We'll be so happy when we can finally get back to browsing in the stacks.
Yes. I put in my hold, holds today for my first curbside pickup.
Oh, good.
Very good. At this time, let's move to regular business. Number one, an update on the closure and discussion of the current executive orders.
Okay, so, we have a whole, whole list of stuff to go over with you today. So that update form that I've been giving you, I've been doing every month, and I keep adding to the end of it. I'm not going to go over the whole thing. I'll just go over what's new on that.
Okay.
The through six eighth portion of it, so there's just a little handful of things. I'm going to mention again, the Letters from Librarians program was introduced. The PR staff created a plan to address promoting library services to patrons who may not be tech savvy or do not follow social media, and we'll talk about that a little bit more later in the meeting. Summer, summer reading promotions were launched. Curbside service plan was clarified and prepared for launch. We started that today. And I want to show you some pictures of our curbside service. Let me see if I can share. I'm just going to share all kinds of good stuff tonight.
I did get a postcard today while you're gearing up.
That's, that's, that's that postcard project. We're going to talk about that. I have Adrian and Trevor here tonight. They're going to talk to you about this. So this picture is our curbside staff working very hard. Every single one of those bags is a curbside. I know it looks a little cattywampus at the moment, but it actually isn't. They know what every one of those little stacks is. And then in addition to that one, I have one more. See if I can find it. Screen share here. Here we go. And this one is, this is out in the lobby, so these are ones that have already been called, and we are waiting for the patrons to come and get them, so. So they've been working very hard on that, and that includes our really cute stamp that Adrian had made, so that we have curbside from CIDL on there, so we've gotten some cool branding going on as well.
Very good.
So.
Has there been any discussion of when Melcat Inner Library Loans will start back up?
So, that's been an interesting, that's actually, it's an excellent question, and it's a really interesting conversation. Basically, when libraries shut down, Melcat was abandoned exactly as it was. So there are things sort of everywhere. So they actually have a hub where materials go in and get rearranged and then go back out to libraries. The hub is piled with bins. Every library has bins. Everybody just sort of dropped everything and got sent home. And so the first step in that process is to try and get everything back where it began, back where it belongs, and then start over. So the first thing that they, that we have to do is report to MCLS that handles Melcat when we're ready to do that for our library. So Brad, our head of technical services, is working with our Melcat staff on that, so we should have an answer for that fairly soon. One of the other things that we have to determine is balancing their quarantining procedures with what we had put in place. Everybody's coming up with these, these rules and policies as we go, and there are some things that don't line up. So Annette's working with Brad and Sue Ann, and they're working out how to make that mesh. So hopefully soon, but it is going to be quite a process like anything else.
Right. I just, and I figured there had been some discussion, but as I was going through my list today, looking for, you know, putting in my requests.
Yep.
There were several that we don't have that were on my list. That's all right. They'll still be on my list whenever the time comes.
Anything that was already on the hold shelf, I believe they're sending those out to the patrons. So if you had already, if it had already arrived and been processed and put under the hold shelf, you'll get those anyway, because as far as Melcat is concerned, those are with the patrons. So if you had anything on hold, that, you'll get that call through the current.
And I can't remember where exactly it all was. That was ages ago. Usually, if I had some requests, so we'll see. If they turn up, great. If not, then whatever. Do it again. Right. It's not a problem.
And then the last thing is with the signing of Executive Order 110, libraries may begin their reopening plans. The circulation staff began that packaging of materials on hold for patrons today. So you got to see those pictures. And then promotion of full curbside pickup will begin on June 15th, so. So then in terms of the executive orders, the executive orders that we're working under now, Executive Order 110 is temporary restrictions on certain events, gatherings, and businesses. Though, the orders that were rescinded for that one are 69 and 96. We've been talking a lot about 69 and 96 the last couple of months. Item 10 of Order 110 is the one that permits libraries to open as of June 8th, subject to the rules governing retail stores as described in Executive Order 202097. So if, next one that we're affected by is Executive Order 202097, our safeguards to protect Michigan's workers from COVID-19, and that outlines the requirements for returning to work and the reopening to the public, which includes a lot of rules about, you know, your cleaning procedures, what your reopening plan looks like, screening employees as they come in, wearing masks, all of those kinds of rules and regulations, and so we've got those laid out in place. And we also have Executive Order 202075. That's the temporary authorization of remote participation in public meetings and hearings and temporarily from monthly meeting requirements for school boards. That's the one that requires board meetings to take place virtually. That is set to expire on June 30th. We haven't heard anything about whether or not that will be allowed to expire. She's not extended it at this point. Our library board has a policy that allows you to continue to meet, for board members to attend virtually. The point at which 75 expires, we would need to have, like we did that first meeting after the closure, where the public can come into the meeting room, and there would be a couple of us in the meeting room, and the board members could determine whether they wanted to be in the meeting room, obviously everyone would be socially distanced, or whether they want to phone in or virtually connect with us through Zoom. So those are the options coming up. At this point, that would be after June 30th, so it looks like our July meeting would be that way, providing nothing changes.
Okay.
In addition, the governor has convened a work group to develop additional guidelines for the reopening of arts and cultural organizations, including libraries. It is anticipated that this document will be released in the next week or so. Would have been nice if we would have gotten it before they opened us up, but we're hoping that what we're doing lines up with what that document says, or we're going to be redoing a lot of stuff. So we followed what's appropriate in the current executive orders, but we'll see. So fingers crossed. So where are we now? So libraries have permission to reopen as of June 8th. CIDL will begin executing our return-to-work plan, including the implementation of curbside service. Staff will return to work at the library, while others will continue to work remotely. Beginning June 8th, circulation will begin contacting patrons with materials currently on hold, so that they may be picked up through curbside. Beginning June 15th, curbside will open to the public. That's currently where we stand. The last document in your little pile there are some legal things that came from Foster Swift, which is Ann Surrink, our attorney. So she's got some safety precautions in here that she, these are things that she's highlighting out of Executive Order 110. The first one is restrictions on the number of people that can be in the building, including employees, and it is based on floor space. So libraries that are less than 50,000 square feet, that would be 25% of occupancy. We are 20,000 square foot building. We do not have an occupancy total for our building. We have occupancy calculations for each of our meeting rooms, but they've never actually done an entire occupancy on our building. So the occupancy for a 50,000 square foot building is a limit of four people per thousand. So if we were following that guideline, we could have, at this point, up to 80 people.
Eighty?
Eighty, eight zero.
Okay. That was one, that was my question coming up.
Yep. So the 25% occupancy, the, I would assume would allow us to actually have more people. Usually, what I'm assuming, or what I'm kind of reading into this, is, for example, if you only had a 2,000 square foot building, if you were only allowed to have four people per thousand square feet, you'd only be allowed to have eight people in the building. So I'm assuming that they measure those buildings separately and then say 25% of occupancy. That's why. And then you have to be careful about how you socially distance. So I'm assuming that 25% would allow us, I mean, our, our meeting room alone has an occupancy rate of like 150. So we would definitely not take that many people in there. But you can see where we're kind of having to look at that calculation and figure it out. So for right now, we're going with the number 80 until I can have a conversation with the fire marshal and get a better number on that. He's never really needed to do our entire building before, and so he didn't, he didn't do that. And I suspect he's probably busily doing a lot of buildings right now, trying to. Because not everybody has needed an occupancy total. He's more, he's more concerned about our meeting rooms.
And this occupancy, does that refer to everyone in the building or the general public?
It does. It refers to everyone in the building. It would be the public and the staff.
Okay.
So then, of course, they, we would need to talk about, you know, regulating entry, creating physical barriers at checkout. So if you've been into grocery stores or other stores, you've seen that they've got the plexiglass shields. Annette and I did some shopping on that pretty early on and decided that the best thing that we could do was wait until we could get the staff back in the building to be involved in the selection process. We have a number of contact points that we felt like we needed more input on that, and really, the only way you can make those decisions is when you can really see them. So we've made some initial choices, but we've selected options and haven't actually purchased those things yet, so that we can get everybody involved in that process and make sure everybody's comfortable with what it is we're putting in. Design spaces and activities in the library to encourage employees and patrons to remain six feet apart. So you're talking stickers on the floor, potentially arrows for one-way aisles, that sort of thing, taking out some tables, maybe putting X-shaped plexiglass shields at round tables, so more than one people, more than one person could sit at a table and making them almost like little carols. Those are the kinds of things that we are looking at doing at this point. Establish and enhance cleaning and sanitizing protocols. Our custodial crew has done an amazing job with that. Arlene did a really nice little presentation for the staff at our last all-staff meeting, and she's made all of her lists of, checklists of cleaning available on our shared server for the staff. So she's got that well under control. And then limiting the number of staff to a minimum necessary to operate, which we do a pretty good job of that anyway, in order to keep things running efficiently. And then, of course, patron notification, so we have to have communications. We have to post signs. Training, we need to train the employees on the appropriate cleaning procedures, which we've been doing, employees on how to manage symptomatic patrons. Notifying patrons... Um, notifying, uh, patrons that masks are required in the building. Um, and then making sure that we have a plan in place for notifying people if somebody is, um, diagnosed with COVID-19. Any questions on any of that?
Will you have masks available, Julie?
I'm sorry?
Have available?
I'm having trouble hearing you. I'm sorry.
Will you have masks available?
Oh, yes, absolutely. So the first thing, we have masks available for the staff and we bought extra disposable masks and we would have them available as people walk into the building. So if they come in without a mask, we would, um, very politely offer them a mask. It would be obviously free of charge and, and they would be, um, able to take a mask without any, um, without any charge for that. So if they come in and they would need one, then they would have the ability to just take one.
And, and do you have a plan for the people who insist on resisting masks?
There's actually, um, some de-escalation training that I would like to do with the staff. Um, and we have not done that yet, so. So the answer is yes.
I just, you know, it, every time you turn around, you, people are arguing about it and.
Yeah, indeed.
I don't think it's too much to ask, but some people do, so.
Well, there is a limitation in terms of age, so children below the age of two, obviously. Um, anybody who's not medically able to wear a mask.
Right.
We use our li, our 3D printer to print, um, face shields, which are, um, a band around the head and a clear plastic shield. Um, and so we've made a number of those. Um, and we have some staff that have already taken a liking to those. So we will be making more of those for the staff, um, especially the circulation staff because it allows them to answer the phone more easily. Um, they're not getting, you know, they don't have all these ties and, and things around their ears.
Yeah, they keep getting knocked off your ear. I know that's, I, I struggle with that too.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, it's easier to hear what they're saying when they're behind the shield as opposed to the covering of their mouth.
Absolutely. It allows for reading lips if that's something that someone does.
Right.
Um, and it's, it's not as hot because there's more space around it so that the air can move more freely. Um, the circulation staff doing their running back and forth from circulation out to the cars are already saying this is the way to go. So even just today, we have made that discovery and, um, a lot of our shields have been cleaned already, so we're going to be making more of those.
Good. Any questions for Julie about our review of where we are?
Um, Julie, did you say you were going to post a sign that for entry, it required a mask?
It's already posted. It's part of the, yep, it is, it is part of the executive order. It is a requirement. So it is already posted on the front door and the back door that masks are required in our building. Um, it does stipulate, um, in the one that the, um, part of the order that is for staff working, that, um, if you are alone in your own workspace, as you can see, I'm in my office and I'm not currently wearing a mask, that you may remove your mask to allow for freer breathing. Um, because there's obviously social distance. There's nobody around, so.
Okay.
I'm glad. All right. Are we ready to review and approve the reopening policy? Number two.
Okay. So as that, as recommended by the library's attorney and taking into consideration the requirements and guidelines presented in the governor's executive orders concerning COVID-19, library reopening policy is being presented to the library board for approval. Um, this policy carefully lays out the stages of reopening, finds who has the authority to shift the library between stages and what the public should expect at each stage. There are six stages ranging from total closure to normal service. Library director and the board can easily shift the service plan between stages to accommodate improvements or setbacks in the evolution of the COVID, COVID-19 pandemic. Um, this policy was developed by the library's attorney answering to include the usual requirements laid out in the government, governor's executive orders. Um, and the board knows that they didn't get their board packet as quickly as I would have liked. And part of it is because a new version of this policy came out Friday, so. Because there were some changes that came out on Friday that she needed to incorporate. Um, and they have been incorporated. So I think it's a little bit, um, optimistic to think you're going to approve this plan and never see it again. We're just going to live out this plan until it's over. I suspect it will need to be tweaked as we go, so you may see, um, adjustments needing to be made to it. Um, it is a different numbering system than the plan that I presented to you that you approved that would allow us to go forward to where we are right now. So you're already seeing a different version. Um, the attorney felt very strongly that she let, she would like to see total closure of the library as one of the stages. I had not counted that as a stage. I was counting the stages of where we were at total closure back to normal. Um, she counted that as a stage, so she renumbered our stages. So where I'm currently saying that we're, um, going state, we're, we're doing a phase one and she's calling them stages so that we can explain to people that it's all different. Um, stage one for her was complete and total closure and we are currently living in, um, two to three. So, um, where the staff is coming back and we are going to curbside. But she, but she has us defining them much more specifically now that, um, there is enough, um, guidance for the state that would allow us to do so. You had a chance to look at this in your packet. Maybe we want to tackle any questions. I don't think you want me to read all, however many pages this is.
No, I would like, I would like to look at number four, the director's role.
Okay.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear about section D, library closure.
Yes. So the library director has the authority to close the library temporarily for a maximum of 14 days without prior, prior library board approval. Library director will inform the president of the, of the determination to close and the proposed duration of the closure. If the library has not been reopened, um, library board may meet to determine whether library director's decision to close will be extended or whether the library will be reopened before the time set forth in the library director's determination. This closure may be due to a specific incident or reoccurrence of an infectious disease in the library's service area. The library director will use reasonable efforts to post notices of the closure, including posting notices at the library and on the library's website. This policy assumes the staff will be paid based on their normal schedule during the library's closure under this paragraph. So essentially what she is hoping to address in this is, for example, um, if we had somebody on staff who was diagnosed with COVID, we would potentially send everybody home and shut the library down.
Right. This was, this was something new that we had not really discussed before.
And she is, and this was the attorney's suggestion that, um, that there be a mechanism to do this because if we have somebody who is diagnosed and we have to wait for the next board meeting or call an emergency meeting, we could be potentially exposing staff to something or the public to something.
I think it's good that it's in there. I think it's important.
Kind of like a snow day.
Yeah.
Talk about that and then let the board know that, that we've done that, so.
Okay. In order to respond to it quickly, I think it has to be that way. I don't, you know, like you said, you can't, um, even, even to call an emergency board meeting can take a day or two to get ahold of everybody and find out a time when a quorum would be available. And in the meantime, we put people at risk in which we certainly don't want to do. Um, I do like that there is some, you know, at some point the board has to be involved if it's going to be longer than 14 days. Clearly that's important. But, you know, I do, I, in order to respond quickly, I think you have to give the director that kind of authority.
Right. And you'll, and you'll notice that 14 days is the standard quarantine period. And that's essentially what she's saying is she's giving me authority to shut us down in a hurry if, if we have a situation that we need to quarantine people quickly before anything happens, so.
Plus, it also says that we can meet and discuss this. So once the library is closed, the board can, does have time to meet and discuss with the director the best process. Right. What, you know, whether we want to go a little bit longer or do we think a shorter time? You know, yes, it does give that mechanism, which is also a good thing because, you know, certainly with a board like ours, it's very active. You know, you, we want to be involved in these kinds of decisions, but Julie has to be able to that quickly, so.
Yep. The other nice thing about it, um, is that, um, it does kind of give you that, that reassurance that if something happens, um, you're, you're not worrying about the staff as well. Um, your situation is really nice because you already have a policy in place that if we were to shut down because, because of an outbreak, um, you already have a mechanism for meeting virtually, which also protects the library board. Um, there are libraries right now who not only are they talking about this policy, but Anne is presenting to their boards that policy that you already, um, approved back in February that allowed you to meet virtually right out of the gate, um, which was really, really nice. So I'm pleased that we have that in place. Cause we need to protect our board members too.
Yeah. So that covers the policy and then we move to the reopening plan and exhibit A.
Yep.
Yep.
I do have one small change in here that I did not catch when I was, um, reading it. I caught it when she gave me the first version. I had prepped a version for your board packet and then Friday she sent me an updated version. And when I updated it, um, I missed a change that I had made. Um, we are using 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit and 38 degrees Celsius as our measure of fever. Um, because, uh, that is Oakland County's measure and we used Oakland County's measure for our screening process. So the staff has to have less than 100.4, the, our measurement should be 100.4 or 38 degrees Celsius.
Okay. Interesting.
And I didn't, I didn't catch that one. I.
No, but I think it's important to be consistent, so.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Consistency is good. Yeah. And presumably the county put some thought into their, their numbers, so.
They did. They did.
Okay. Is there anything in particular we need to look at in the reopening plan?
I don't have any specific to point out other than, um, you may want to look at the hours of operation. And when you get to, um, when you get to stage three, our hours of operation, um, we've been doing Monday through Saturday, 10 to 6. Um, the curbside pickup, curbside pickup service hours will expand to incorporate evening hours to accommodate patrons returning to work once the procedure, um, has been tested and staff is able to do so. Um, because so many things opened up with 110, um, we're already having people asking to come in the evening. Annette said, um, on her way out the door that, um, people are wanting to pick things up past six o'clock. So, um, closing at six, uh, is definitely a short-term thing. I don't know if the board has feelings about when you'd like to see us go back to, to full hours.
As soon as you're comfortable.
Okay.
And as soon as we have someone then who's going to be in the life, going to be working to deliver at curbside. This, I'm not sure what your staffing plan is initially for curbside service. Because someone will have to be there if we're going to make it till nine. Someone's got to have that evening delivery shift.
So we have a department head meeting tomorrow and I, I sort of warned them that this was coming, that, you know, 10 to 6 has been nice, but, um, it, it allowed us to kind of compact. But I think we're to the point now, not only, there's, there are a couple of advantages. First of all, there's an advantage that it allows the public to, um, come into the evening, but it also allows us to more easily socially distance the staff because we're spreading our staff out over, uh, multiple shifts as we did in the past. Um, we are already past the point at which that we would be closed on Sundays for the summer. So this would be, um, switching over. It would only be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday till nine and everything else would be the same, so.
Right. That worked out. That worked out well for the reopening.
Yep. You're talking three hours, four nights, so.
Okay. Any other questions? No, it looks pretty thorough to me. And as we know, it might be adjusted as we go. Well, that's, uh, every, everything seems like that's the way everything is going, but that's, it's good to have a good base to work from. Then as you make adjustments, you're just fine tuning things.
One, one question that did come up, um, amongst other libraries and other library directors, um, was the question of masks and whether or not we would, um, require masks even if they were not required by executive order. Anne wrote the, um, policy to say as required by executive order. Um, and I just left it in and part of the reason I left it in is because I thought, you know, I think we're going to, we've got masks for quite a while. Um, there are actually two executive orders that are requiring masks, not just the states, but also the county. So, um, I felt comfortable that the point at which any of those expired, we would be revisiting other things anyway and that you'd be looking at the, so I thought, you know, let's just leave it as executive order for now. Um, but if you feel differently, that might be something that you want to think about.
Down the line.
Down the line. Mm-hmm. Yep. Whether or not, once the executive order releases that, if we would still continue to require masks.
It certainly is easier in terms of enforcing it if you have somebody else to point to and say, oh, you know, the governor is the bad guy or the county executive is the bad guy. We're just doing what we're told we have to do.
Mm-hmm.
And concern for safety. We don't know yet whether we're going to have a resurgence.
Exactly.
Soon. Apparently 20 some states are having a resurgence that, that opened a little earlier than Michigan, so we'll see. Well, by and large, Michigan has managed to decrease the curve. So hopefully we'll be prepared if there's an uptick. But we certainly have to make plans with that possibility in mind. So I think the executive order idea is fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you are aware of that. As I said, that was a conversation among other library directors and other library boards, so.
If there are no other questions, I'll accept a motion for the review and approval of the policy. I'll move.
Remember we made a small, a small amendment to it. I changed the temperature.
Right. I move that we approve the policy as amended.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the policy as amended. Any questions or comments? If not, let's call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Alison McFadden Keisling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Dan Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion is approved. Let's remove, let's move to number three, the review of the postcard project.
Okay. So I'm just going to read the lead in and hopefully Adrian and Trevor can be unmuted so that they can do this. Um, due to the pandemic, there are many changes in the way the library is able to market services. Most of these options are online, but some of our patrons may not be connected via social media or prefer more traditional means of contact. Library's PR team is looking for new ways to address this issue and are proposing a mailing project to fill the PR gap with the cancellation of some of our usual means of contact, such as Parks and Rec Guide or the local newspaper. Um, some of this project is being funded, um, due to the cancellation of signage in the youth area. It will not take place this year due to COVID-19 closure. Um, the remainder of the funding is being requested from fund balance. So if Trevor and Adrian would like to talk about that, I can share my screen and show the postcard I do actually.
The one that I received today.
Yeah, I got mine too.
Okay, we've got ours.
Oops. There it is. All right.
That one.
That one.
Yeah. So the, um, I'm glad you guys got, um, the postcards. Um, the, that one is the first in a series of four that we're actually planning. Um, and, um, the others are outlined in the board packet. So there's, um, one coming up on our itinerary that is specific to curbside. And then we're also hoping to get in, um, a vote for the best plug on that as well. The campaign that we won last year for the best library in Southeast Michigan. Um, another one will be for the end of the summer reading program to kind of announce the, the finale of that and to make sure everybody gets their last, um, tickets in for their prizes, their last, uh, challenges completed. Um, and then, um, one more that I don't have in the screen in front of me, um, that we had planned out.
Fall programming.
Oh, for fall programming. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Uh, just to kind of announce, you know, again, because we don't know where we're going to be at in terms of publications, so to kind of say, you know, here's where we're at. Um, programs might be virtual, might be, um, at. Programs might be virtual, might be in person, and we have, of course, there's going to be awesome programs regardless of what format they come in. So we are looking to do these four. I think the first postcard has been, I've gotten some feedback from other staff and from other friends that I have that live in Clarkston that they've gotten it, as well as board members that I've heard now that have gotten it, so that's exciting, and people have been really liking it. So I'm hoping we actually see maybe even an uptick in our registrations this year for summer reading, even though we're not actually physically in the library.
And while we know, we always promote your summer reading challenge extensively, this is the first time that I'm aware that we have not been kind of halfway or more through the Independent Challenge of Recreation Guide, and essentially, people are pulling us out of their mailbox and seeing us directly and seeing summer reading challenge directly. There's nothing to flip through, it's very direct, and we're really hoping, as Adrienne said, that this is going to drive some traffic to our site in the next, you know, several weeks to month, to really get the signups to stay consistent with last year.
Trevor, when it says that they can register online, that would be at the CIDLlibrary.org?
Yes, ma'am, and if you go to our homepage now, there's a filler image that Adrienne has created that says "coming soon," and so on Monday, that will change to a live image that has links to all three events, all three programs.
Great. Thank you.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we're, we're thinking that $12,000 from Fund Balance should cover the printing costs?
That would cover the printing and mailing costs for three additional postcards, because we do have a project that we were planning on originally for the youth department for some signage that we're not going to complete due to the COVID closure. So between that excess funding and then the transfer from Fund Balance, we should have enough to complete three more cards as outlined.
Okay, any questions or comments for Trevor or Adrienne? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I move that we approve a budget adjustment of $12,000 from Fund Balance to line 900 printing.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a budget adjustment of $12,000 from Fund Balance to line 900 printing in order to connect with the public. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor will please say aye by roll call.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Now, the important plumbing question.
Oh, goodness, I know. Very exciting. Okay, so. Okay, the library has always had an issue with very high lime content in the water. A few years ago, we replaced the water softener after the previous one failed, but could not be replaced for quite some time due to financial issues. Since then, the Friends of the Library added a water fountain for use of the public and staff. That includes filtration and a water bottle filler in order to reduce the usage of bottled water. This is a popular feature in the library and currently the only filtered water in the building, so it gets used for individual as well as group activities. Due to the pandemic, it has been recommended, actually, it's required, that all drinking fountains, both the fountain and the bottle filler features, be turned off to prevent the spread of the virus. It had been considered to add reverse osmosis taps to the sinks in the staff room, community meeting room, and youth activities room. Since there have been so many building projects to tackle, and because the Friends provided us with the drinking fountain, we had deferred this project multiple times. Now, given the necessity of turning off the drinking fountain, we are revisiting this project. We also priced out a tap filter option. While the tap option could be slightly less expensive, it would require the replacement of the faucets, which currently have integrated sprayers that we had installed approximately two years ago that are not compatible with faucet filters. In addition, given the lime content of our water, the tap filter would not be as effective as the reverse osmosis system. This level of filtering would provide bottle, bottle-quality water and would reduce the wear and tear on the coffee pots and other equipment that use water. It would be available in both meeting rooms and the staff room, where these uses take place for both public and staff. We anticipate when the library reopens that this will be an appreciated feature, and doing all three at the same time provides a savings in terms of labor. So this project has been on the list for a year or two, but had not been put on the budget because of other improvements. Given the library's water and plumbing challenges, the current restrictions, we would request a budget adjustment of $2,500 from, from Fund Balance to proceed with this project, and we would put that in line 931, and that would be something that Arlene would take care of.
Julie, I have a question. So you would be putting a reverse unit basically in each separate facility?
Under each sink, yes.
Okay.
A whole, we looked at the whole, the whole building system, and that seemed, even most of our water usage beyond those three main sinks is toilets and.
Hand washing.
And hand, yeah, so we felt like those, it just, when I talked to the plumber, he said, you don't really want to do that, not for a building this big.
No, you're, you're, you're cleaning an awful lot of water that's just going to be flushed right down tubes, so.
We have reverse osmosis in our house. Just keep in mind, if you do have a lot of lime in the water, the filters have to be replaced at least once a year.
Yep.
That's what we found on our house.
And we priced that out as well, and thought that, that's an easy budget thing to put in, so.
Yeah, it's a matter of getting somebody to do it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Now, does our company handle that type of thing?
We've actually switched to a, a local commercial plumbing company for that purpose, and we're getting better pricing from them in terms of plumbing.
Okay.
And we're, we're very happy. They are based out of Flint, they're very responsive, and just like Allied, they have assigned us a specific plumber. So we get the same plumber every time when we call, which has been really nice. They came highly recommended by the Brandon Township Library. We were struggling a little bit. We love Allied for other things, but their plumbing department, we were struggling with a little bit because they were having a lot of turnover with plumbers in our area, and the quality was very uneven, so we decided to go a different route specifically for plumbing, and we're much happier with this one.
That's fine.
Yep.
We think, who was doing all the work on this? Arlene doing the investigation?
Arlene and I worked on this one together, yeah.
Very good.
Yep.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thanks, Nancy. Did you have experience?
Yes, we've had it for probably 10 or 12 years.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
I make, I make a motion to approve a budget adjustment of $2,500 from Fund Balance to line 931 to install reverse osmosis systems for our three major sinks.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a budget adjustment of $2,500 from Fund Balance to line 931, building and grounds maintenance, to improve, to add reverse osmosis system to our faucets. Any other questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shall.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion is passed. Now, our last item, number five, is the emergency paid sick leave policy.
So this one, you got via email today, so I apologize for that. I actually got it this morning, and you didn't even get it early in the morning because I had to proofread it before I could send it out to you. Essentially, what it is, is it is a policy that incorporates all of the various FFCRA, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and emergency paid sick leave policy regulations into a policy that is easy for us to distribute to the staff. So our attorney has put this together for us. This one, the only thing that I had to do was make sure their name was in all the right places. Everything else is basically set by law, and it runs from April 1st until December 31st of 2020. It provides for sick leave due to COVID-19 for full and part-time staff. It also allows for partial pay for somebody caring for somebody who is sick and has some determinations about, you know, how to return to work and that sort of thing, so. I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, or if you want to, if you had a chance to look at it, or if there's specific questions about it. It's only, it's, so it's not quite two pages. It's not like the other one that was like eight pages.
Do you need a doctor's letter or anything for this, or?
On the return to work, letter H, once the reason for which the employee took EPSL has concluded, the employee shall return to work on the employee's next regularly scheduled workday or shift. Prior to returning to work from EPSL, employees will be required to complete a confidential health form certifying that the employee does not present a risk of spreading COVID-19 in the workplace. Essentially, what we're doing right now, as part of our daily screening, is that we have a list of three questions that have to do with symptoms, whether or not you've traveled internationally, that sort of thing, and we have the employees sign off on that. We are not gathering actual health information, we're not recording people's temperatures or anything like that, because those are all under HIPAA guidelines and HIPAA privacy restrictions, and that is not in our wheelhouse. So we are having people sign off, showing that they are verifying that those are accurate. So that's how.
Section E, section E is pretty definite about the requirements for wanting to do this.
Yep.
Right, and it, and it does require verification from somebody, I mean, either from a doctor or from a quarantine order, a copy of a quarantine order, or the name of the child that's being cared for, and, you know, that there's no one, no other childcare provider that's available. I thought it was pretty thorough and, you know, and fair. We, you know, we've, right from the beginning, we've wanted to take care of our employees and protect the other employees and the public all at the same time. So I thought this was a good policy.
Yes. I just have one comment. I hope she's correct. After December 31st, we don't have to worry about this.
Well, that's the length of time on these two, on these two federal acts.
Right.
So I suspect that if December 31st isn't the date, that those two will be extended, and she will send me a, zip me an email that says, hey, get to your board and have them update this, so, yes.
A little addendum.
The FFCRA and ESPL are both set to expire on December 31st of 2020. That's where that number came from.
Well, hopefully, we won't have anyone who needs to take this kind of a leave, but it's good that the provisions are.
Our goal is to try and keep everybody healthy, so.
That's right.
I will accept a motion.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Have we had anybody in association with the library have any COVID-19 issues?
Um, let's see, how do I answer that question, make sure I'm not naming any names? We had somebody who was peripherally, a secondary family member who was exposed.
Exposed.
Uh huh, yep, so, but that was after the library had already been closed and everybody was working remotely, so anything that has happened has been post, we sent everybody home. We've had two of those where they were, like, once removed, so nobody directly in our staff.
That's terrific.
Yeah, that is very good.
Very fortunate.
As far as we know, nobody is, yeah.
And since you could have had it and not even known it.
Yes.
As far as we know, yeah.
All right, I will accept a motion on the emergency paid sick leave policy.
I move that we approve the policy as presented.
I second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the emergency paid sick leave policy lasting from April 1st to 20, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. Are there any comments or questions? If not, Julie, please call the roll.
Hey, Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shall.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Are there any other concerns that we need to deal with tonight?
Let this open in case the board did.
Is the, is the staff looking forward to getting back?
I think so, yeah. There was, there was quite a lot of joyousness in the building, and there's anxiousness, but I think they walked in the door, the ones that came in today, and, you know, they have to wash their, they have to do the hand sanitizer and, and sign off on the daily screening and whatever, and then the minute they were back in, they were chatting from six feet apart and, and talking about, you know, how to improve our, our procedures for curbside, and it was just, as you saw the picture, I took pictures of them up at the circulation desk working, so I think they're, yes, they're much relieved. Not everybody was back, it was a fairly small crew that was in today, but everybody had their masks on, and, yeah.
That's great.
I'm glad to be back in my office. I loved my guest room, but this is, this is much nicer.
It should be easier here.
Everything takes twice as long when you try to do it remotely, I've discovered.
Well, because not all of your resources are right there. I mean, yes, a lot of it's online, and you can download that stuff, but there still is, you know, oh, that file you might need to answer a question is not at home with you, or whatever. I can see where that would make it trickier.
You trip over things. You, you're doing great, and then you get to one thing, and you're like, oh, I need that password, and that password doesn't work.
Yes. That kind of thing.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
I have to do roll call.
Please, call the roll.
Dan Gaffney?
Yes.
Dan Green?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Kesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
And Chris Shall.
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned, and you can tell I will be happy to be back in the room.
Yes.
I think we all will be.
And we're, it looks like we're adjourning at 7:40?
We are adjourning at 7:40.